I call this meeting of the Northeast Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. We are not adjourning into executive session. So I will call the meeting to order at? 5:33. Thank you. First of all, it's so nice to see your faces in person.
Part of their faces.
Part of your faces, at least. And before we start, I just have to take a minute to congratulate all the principals and staff at our high schools who did an amazing job with graduations today. And executive staff, everybody who has planned these in-person walk-the-stage graduations. Yeah, it was just. It was unbelievable. And every, it went so well, better than anyone could have expected. And the principals and staff did an amazing job. So just wanted to give a shout out to them.
I can also piggyback to the custodians, and I'm sure they were just wiping everything down the whole time, and it was, it was really just a great job by all.
Yeah. Okay. Item two, new business for possible board action. A, Business Services. One, possible action regarding notice of public meeting to discuss budget and proposed tax rate. Mr. Villarreal.
Yes, ma'am. Whoop. Testing. Yes, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Mike, executive staff, and the few guests. This action item is to set the meeting, the adoption, and the public hearing for June 22nd, and it's to advertise in the newspaper, and we need that approval.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions about this? I'm going to have to remember to look over that way. And I'm used to looking at the Zoom thing with your hand raised, so will you raise your hand up here, please?
You're at the Churchill's table.
All right. So do I have a motion to approve publication of the notice of public meeting to discuss budget and proposed tax rates in accordance with the Texas Education Code, Section 44.004, setting the public meeting date as June 22nd, 2020? So, Liz? Thank you, Mrs. Winkley. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Hasso. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Item three, presentations. A, Budget Study Session Number One.
Yes, Madam President. Tonight, we bring you Budget Study Session Number One. We're going to have three with an adoption. So every week, every Monday, I guess, from now till June 22nd. So we should have one June 8th, June 15th, and hopefully the adoption on June 22nd. It's interesting times right now. We're looking at quite a bit of things, trying to get this COVID situation and where we're going to be getting and funding and so forth. So with that, I'll turn it over to Brian Moy, our Executive Director of Finance and Accounting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. On May 28th, 2019, I stood at a podium which used to be right there. That was 370 days ago for last year's Budget Study Session Number One, and said that I've never felt less prepared for a Budget Study Session than I did that night. Well, then 2020 came along and said, here, will you hold my drink for a while? I mean, and it's, it's me and, it's our fault, because when we finally finished the budget, we said it'll never get harder than this. So we jinxed it. Yeah. But we will. I mean, we adopted a budget last year. We will adopt a budget again this year, and we're going to maintain ourselves as good stewards of public funds. So here's the agenda we're going to follow. Actually, Dan already covered the first bullet. Basically, we're meeting every Monday through the 22nd. I'm going to briefly go over, as I do every year, just what are the adoption rules? What does Education Code say we have to do with adoption? Then we're going to go and look at general fund funding, starting federal with the COVID response, the CARES Act, then move into state funding, and finish up with our biggest pot of money, which is local property taxes. Okay. We are a fiscal, a school district with a fiscal year of July 1 to June 30. Our budget must be adopted prior to June 30. The board, by law, only adopts the budget for three funds, the general fund, the debt service fund, and the school nutrition services fund. As we just did, the budget adoption must be at a public hearing. You declared July 22nd to be the public hearing. Somewhere between 10 days before that and 30 days before that, we will post the required notice in the San Antonio Express-News. And as a reminder, you do not adopt the tax rate at the budget hearing. There are certain hoops that we have to jump through in order to adopt a tax rate. First, because we are adopting a budget prior to July 25th, we do not have certified property values from the appraisal district. A new wrinkle with HB3 is that Texas Education Agency has to tell us what our base M&amp;O tax rate is going to be, called the maximum compressed tax rate. And even though we are not in recapture, not anywhere close to recapture, there are certain filings regarding being a property wealthy district that TEA needs to sign off on prior to us being allowed to adopt a budget. Okay. So let's talk about the CARES Act. There are several funding sources that are going to come into play in our response to distance learning COVID-19 feeding kits. The main one is the CARES Act. There's also going to be some FEMA money, but they're really staying out of this because it wasn't a physical natural disaster. We may get some reimbursement for sanitizing, cleaning, personal protective equipment, that sort of thing, but FEMA is not going to be a big portion of this. What will be are the governors, the two parts of the CARES Act, the Governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund, which they have announced they plan on using as a cost reimbursement grant cycle, and they will reimburse up to about 75% of certain distance learning costs, up to, for Northeast ISD, $7.9 million. The amount per district is an amount per compensatory education student. So they're basically spreading it out along the state in line with Title I counts. And again, the rules and the application process are pending there. The other one is the, the bigger one is the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. You will hear me call that ESER. There's not really good, they didn't, they didn't pick real good acronyms for these. So, but I'll talk about this one as ESER. And these funds are going to flow to the state, and TEA is going to supplant state foundations, school program funds with this money. So there's 1.3 billion statewide, 11 million noted for NEISD, but we really aren't going to see that money, because they are simply going to take monies that they can't pay us through FSP because of so much state revenue loss, and stick in this 1.3 billion in their coffers just to help pay out the end of this year. And again, rules and application process are pending. So those of you who were around in 2009, 10, 11, 12, 13, does this sound familiar? It should, because this is exactly what happened going into, or the state's response to the Great Recession. Then it was called the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. It also had two major components, the State Fiscal Stabilization Fund and the Education Job Fund, both of which the state of Texas used as a supplant of state funds, meaning no new money to the school district, swapping one bucket for another. So what these did is it kicked the can down the road. But it did, I mean, it did, you know, keep us going for three years. Back then, we were still growing. So we had some cuts to our budget, but it was really to offset growth, and the stabilization fund pretty much kept us whole. But then in 2011, we all know, the states, they made some pretty drastic cuts to education, over $5 billion, most of that to our direct foundation school entitlements. Over the course of two fiscal years, we lost close to $70 million in state funds in 11, 12, and 12, 13. And the Education Job Fund could only offset a portion. As you can see above, the state fiscal, I cannot say that word tonight. Stabilization Fund was about $7, $18 million a year. The Education Job Fund came in, and it was only $10 million. So that's when we started locally, having unfortunately to start to make some tough decisions regarding spending, staffing levels, compensation. Those of you who were around the State Fiscal Stabilization Fund, the state went so far with their supplant as to have school districts adopt their general fund budgets with, in this case, the second year of stabilization, putting $17.4 million in the general fund under state revenue to adopt your budget. Then we came to you a couple of weeks later with Budget Amendment One, taking it out of state money general fund, sticking it in federal money in its own fund. But our adopted budget showed that the stabilization funds came from TEA as state revenue. And the Education Job Fund was for 11, 12. Again, it was just a one-time supplant. The interesting thing about this, though, is that the Education Job Fund was supposed to be on top of the other ARA funds. Except, it was actually created in 2010, but Texas was ineligible to receive the funding when the federal government passed the bill, because Texas refused to certify that it wouldn't supplant. So federal government held up the funds. But going into 2011, we were getting into some major political wrestling with government shutdown in Washington, and to avoid the shutdown, one of the compromises that was made was to release the funds to Texas and allow them to supplant. And so that's what happened, and we got our money in time to have it post to the 11, 12 school year.
And Brian, if I can just, if I can just say a few things about that. Back in '05, remember, we had that tax relief that we had in '05, and then we got into the Great Recession of '09? But a lot of the laws started changing. They started cutting our funding around that time, but we were prepared. We kind of started knowing that we were going to have to start reducing some of our costs, so we did. So the effect wasn't as bad. You know, House Bill Three kind of put us back to where we should have been all those previous years, and now we might find ourselves back in, back in '11, 11 and 12 because of all the issues with state funding and what kind of revenues they're going to be getting. So I just wanted to throw that out, that we did go through this, like Brian said, 11, 12, and 13, but that's when the state started cutting education funding. So they kind of put us in a hole, 70 million there, and then by the time the laws changed, I mean, we lost almost 120 million over those years. So just wanted to throw that in.
Was 11 when we got rid of the AB schedule?
I thought we did that as the first step of ours in '09.
Oh, in '09.
Yeah, in anticipation, knowing that these federal funds were going to dry up eventually, we were proactive and started our cost reduc, a three-year cost reduction program in '09.
Yeah, because we started forecasting out, and we started seeing that they were really cutting us back. So we started making some adjustments at that time to offset some of the potential losses.
Okay. I was on Council PTA at the time and not on the board, but I just remembered that that was, couldn't remember when that was. Thank you.
Okay. So thinking about now going forward, what's going to happen with state funds? We have, you know, we're still winning on rules and, and program guidelines on the federal funds, but I wanted to give you an idea of where general fund is going to start as we get these new pieces of information in. So right now, the 1920 adopted budget is pretty much at break even. It's about a $500,000 deficit. But we are actually forecasted to end the year with a surplus of about $4.6 million, $132 million fund balance, and that equates to 3.1 months' worth of operations in fund balance. I mean, that's, I mean, there are districts with a lot more than that, but for NEISD, that's, that's a big chunk. We've, by comparison, when we started the cost containment program, if you looked at June 30, 2009, the district only had 1.6 months of operations in fund balance. We were super tight, and it was, it, it made the three-year cost reduction program that much harder. So why is that fund balance important? First, you have to know, again, fund balance is not a savings account. It is not a specified rainy day fund, the way the state has in their economic stabilization fund. It's an ever-changing balanced fund that goes up and down throughout the year. We, as a school district, have certain inflows, where periods of the, of the year when a lot of cash is coming in. You know, we get a big state check in September, but in October, we get a ton of tax revenue in December and January. But then there's months where we have practically nothing coming in, but yet our outflows, especially considering where so much of us is a monthly payroll, that our outflows are, are spread out along the year. Your fund balance helps you deal with the fact that your, your cash flows are not consistent, both on the in and the out. So it's good, it's good just from an operational standpoint. Second, a strong fund balance tells investors about our creditworthiness, which means when we go out to market with our bonds, we can demand better interest rates. All school district debt is rated, top-rated AAA because of the permanent school fund guarantee. However, since we've increased our fund balance, our underlying ratings, no guarantee from the state, are AA1 from the rating agency Moody's, and AA+ from Fitch. Both of those, the only way we could get higher is to become AAA on our own. There are very few governments that are AAA on their own. I mean, the city of San Antonio is, CPS Energy is, but those are huge compared to us. But it does help when we go to market. If you take, if you take a district with a poor underlying rating and us going out to market on the same day, we will get better interest rates. Better interest rates means less INS taxes being paid by our taxpayers. It saves them a lot of money in the long run. And as we're going to probably find out over the next couple of years, our fund balance is going to allow us flexibility to react to these changes in funding without being as drastic in our, in our reaction as we maybe were 11, 10, nine years ago. Gives us some sort of, a little bit more stability. So looking at the state funding, the biggest thing is, it's uncertain. There are too many unknowns right now to be able to have a confident, absolute, here is what's going to happen over the next couple of years with state funding. Some, some big concerns, and I know they're major concerns for Dr. Micah, will the students return? If the students do return?
More than major, Mr. Moy.
Okay. If the students do return, will we get per ADA funding for those that don't return and continue with distance learning? TEA has switched their, their verbiage when it comes to funding this year. We get funded on a average daily attendance. Every six weeks, you say how many kids showed up to school. At the end of the year, you take each of those six weeks, combine them, and divide by six. That's your average daily attendance. This year, they're going to do it for the first four periods prior to closing. Then they're going to say, yeah, some sort of historical average, this is how your fifth and sixth weeks normally look. We're going to apply that. But they're not calling it like adjusted attendance. They're now calling it a whole harmless. We're going to hold you harmless for the fifth and sixth six weeks for not taking attendance. So what does that mean going forward if we hadn't end up with a blended in-person, remote model? Will there be a mechanism for recording the children at home as attendance for funding purposes?
Do you mind if I jump in, Mr. Moy? So I can tell you that Anthony and Donna had pushed out a survey to our community. What we're, what we're doing, maybe you've heard about it or seen it, but it was some feedback about the distance learning experience, because of course, we're always in a cycle of getting better. But the other point to the survey was asking, what are parents' thoughts going forward for next fall? Do they plan to send their kids back? What is it that they're looking for? Well, it's still active, so I don't want to, but I can tell you that when you look at the numbers of people already, they're unsure what they're going to do next year, whether they want their child to go back. I probably receive several emails a day asking if we're going to provide a distance learning option in the fall, and see what we don't know is, will TEA fund us for that? Will that actually be funded? Because the percentage right now, and again, I think we've had, Dr. Newman, what, about a little over 4,000 responses to that survey?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven. You're looking at almost 20% saying, I'm not sure. That's like over 10,000, I mean, that's, let's see, that's about 13,000? If you, if you take that out of the, you know, being indicative. So, so those are things that we have to be mindful of in looking at. Commissioner Morath, we've been, you know, all superintendents around the state have twice a week Zoom calls with him to stay abreast. It does not sound like we're going to get that guidance until July.
So, oh, this is Terry Williams? Oh, we're not on Zoom. So do, out of those that responded to the survey, do we know what mix? I mean, is it mostly those that have kids in elementary school, or is it the high schools? Or we don't know?
So on, so I looked at that today. I actually pulled it up, Ms. Williams, and it's about a third, a third, and a third. It, it's pretty, it's pretty equal. Don't, you know, I'm not going to say it's perfect, but it was pretty close. And again, I, I think it's just indicative of a lot of the uncertainty that families have right now in moving forward, and what the fall's going to look like, coupled with a lot of information out there that I'm, people are starting to wrestle with what they believe and what they don't believe in. And so how that all plays out for us is going to be interesting. You know, Mr. Jarrett has been working very hard on distance learning and really bringing a blended learning model to it. That training began, I believe, yesterday, right? Last week? Yeah, that's right. Today's Monday. Couldn't have begun, but it began last week. So we are already, Dan's folks over in technology have been working hard to do it. So we're already trying to train up people to, to boost that, but also be mindful of the, the great responsibility teachers have, and trying not to overwhelm them in, in a future, because I think I've said this many times before, it's kind of like the wild, wild west out there. This isn't anything we've encountered. So everybody's kind of picking their path, right? We are trying to be very mindful of our teachers and not say, you have to do both at once.
So, so the distance learning would still be, so someone that's in a distance learning program would still be considered our student, not a homeschool student taken out of the attendance role or whatever?
That's what we don't know. That's it. Because see, if, right now, what they said is, you don't have to take attendance. So when we take attendance, it's basically, let's count heads, we mark it down, and then we report it. Well, during this COVID closure, we did not have to report attendance at all, at all. They just are going to use this formula of like three years, come up with a number and say, that's what your attendance would have looked like for your fifth and your six, six weeks. What we don't know is next year, if 20% of our community says, you know what, I don't want my child back in school, I would prefer to do distance learning. Full transparency, one of my own kids does, would really prefer to be a distance learner. She thrives in it. The other one, not so much. He needs to go back to school. But you have that out there, and, and the one thing about, I think COVID-19 has exposed a lot of things about education, some good and some things that you can definitely see to work on, such as how do you get a robust system for internet accessibility for all students, because it definitely exposed that gap that's out there. So, so many things are yet to be seen. And again, until we receive that guidance from the Texas Education Agency in the state about what's that funding going to look like if that parent decides not to send their child back to school? And we keep them enrolled at Reagan High School. Will we receive funding if we take their attendance? So we check in each day and say, yes, you know, you're there. And if you'll remember, I'm going to do a shameless plug for us, but if you'll recall when COVID-19 kicked off, there was a newspaper article in the Express News on how many districts around us could only find about 75% of their kids. At that moment, we were the only district that was capturing 96% to 98% of our kids. So we did not experience that like so many others. But again, a lot of districts could not find kids once this began. And that's, just replicate that statewide. Sandy, you remember you were on a call with Commissioner Morath?
Commissioner caught it. The commissioner noted it, and the commissioner shared it with the rest of the state. He called us out by name positively, I don't mean negatively. And he was very proud of us for that, too.
So right now, like, oh, I'm sorry, I don't mean to.
Go ahead, Terry, go ahead.
So right now, like you said, we don't know, it, it appears that they, TEA, might allow a waiver, if you will, of the attendance requirement, but then, at the same time, we don't know how that would affect the, or if it will affect the funding.
Correct. See, we don't, again, I mean, if we, if 20% of our community decided not to send their kids back to school, right? Which I don't, I mean, who knows what that will look, if that would happen or not? But if they chose not to, and we didn't receive funding for 20% of our kids, it's, I mean, Dan and I talked about that. I've never, usually Dan, and I'll, I'll give him a plug here, usually Dan's pretty calm about stuff. He, he really is. I mean, he stays pretty calm, but when I showed him the, those results, I, Dan was like, I mean, it stunned him, because the impact would be so great. Now, certainly, the state has to think of something along these lines. It's just, when is that going to come out? And by the way, we're, we have to adopt a budget. And so, you know, again, that's why, as Mr. Moy began with it, right? We thought last year HB3 was tough. Well, as I explained when we were going through this presentation, it was a cakewalk last year, because we were getting money. It really was. We didn't know how much, but we knew we were getting money. This time, we don't know what's going to happen. That's the difficult part, is will it continue to be funded? Will it not? And then what's it going to look like if we do? And so those are the pieces that are tough. Now, I, I do want to reassure you all, though, as, as Brian stated, as a district, we've been down this road before. You know, as you can see, Mr. Byer, you've been, each Zoom meeting that we held, you always asked if we were still within budget. You can see, we're still within budget. Even addressing all of the COVID-19 components, we have stayed within budget. So we have a longstanding history of that, and we continue, and we plan to continue that. It's just, we have to take some assumptions and, and start thinking about the what-ifs. And, you know, everybody's going to be in this together, the entire state.
I do, I have a question. So on, and Mr. Anthony, maybe you can help me with this, because in my head, I, I think, okay, we have students who say they're not comfortable coming back, and so now we have students who are learning, are distance learners, so our classrooms are smaller. And so then, we combine classrooms, and so then, now we've got teachers who are, I mean, my mind is spinning when I hear all of this. And so now, what do we do with these extra teachers? And so are we able to, you know, like you said, I can't imagine asking a teacher to do distance learning in a classroom. So then, are we working on then having designated teachers that do Zoom or distant learning?
Yeah. So I can actually answer that, Ms. Winkley. So one, your statement of, I cannot imagine districts asking So one, your statement of, I cannot imagine districts asking teachers to do both? Well, that's factually incorrect. They are actually asking teachers to do that. There are districts doing it. Mr. Byer received one of those phone calls.
So they have a classroom setting and then there's.
That's what they're talking about next year.
Oh, okay.
They're talking about having teachers do both. Mr. Jarrett and his team, look, we haven't made 100% decision yet. What we are looking at, because again, we just simply don't know what that's going to look like. He has three different plans, maybe four now. Four. I know we were talking about a fourth, so see, we're on four. About what we could do in the fall to address all of these things. And see, the thing, when you think about distance learning, you have to put it into perspective. My sophomore was just fine with it. She's independent, she could handle it. But think about a kindergartner, or let's think of a pre-K. Let's talk a four-year-old, right? How does that look for that four-year-old? And is it, see, it's those kinds of things that, that we're talking about, looking at. How do we address it in the fall? And, and as you can see out in the state and even across the country, districts are really grappling with it. The CDC released their guidance about how schools can look that have triggered a lot of responses. Both that that's crazy and both that's not far enough. And so that uncertainty out there creates a lot of worry or angst for our people. And so what we're trying to do is rather than come out and make bold statements about things we simply do not know, we have chosen to wait. Because guessing does not do our community any, any good. It just simply does not. And so what we've chosen to do, and I'll just say for me, has been, let's wait and see. And then we'll give the community the right information at the time, rather than, well, it could be this, but it also could be this and it could be that, too. But I don't really know because of, you know, it, at some point, you have to think about, through all of it, think about all the information that's come out. It's been hard to track it because one day they say one thing, Ms. Winkley, you've talked about it, right? There's one piece of information, the next day, there's something different. Then you wonder why people are confused by it because it's consistently changing. So we've just chosen to just say, hey, we're going to, we're going to build lots of plans, Plan Four, in anticipation of it, right? We can use, Ms. Grony, you started out with graduation, right? If you'll recall, I made that determination on how graduations would look before the commissioner had approved anything. Right? But I felt very confident that I thought, yep, this is a way that they are going to approve. And we were correct. So again, once we feel like we have our hands around where the, where the state's leaning, then we'll start to communicate out. I'm recording tomorrow my last parent message, and it will be, stay tuned, stay connected. You know, Ms. Chancellor and her group have done a marvelous job of communication through this. Absolutely amazing. And she's been really good about driving them back to our website, driving them back to the Critical Updates page, driving them back to our social media, because that's where you're going to find the correct information. That's been our message and it will continue to be. Come back to us and once we have it, we will share it with you.
Okay, well, thank you so much, Dr. Newman and Mr. Jarrett. I called you Mr. Anthony earlier, sorry. I know, I know, and you know, parents will ask, and I tell them, we don't know, but I know this. I know we'll be prepared. And I know we'll be prepared because you've worked diligently at assuring that we will be prepared. So whatever that may be, thank you.
Breaking news from this side of the room, Mr. Jarrett has already developed the fifth plan. He's working on number six by the end of the meeting, so.
You two talk later.
No, but you know, Ms. Winkley, again, I'm going to do a shameless plug for my staff. But y'all, when you say, we'll be prepared, they were so prepared for this. As prepared as you can get. I mean, the fact that we were the first district in the area to deploy meals the day after spring break. And I'm not sure, Mr. Clary, how many to date now? We were at 1.58 million not that long ago. And we continue to, to, to feed. Transportation kicked in. I mean, we brought our people back in transportation and custodial back, and, and they've been absolutely fabulous through this entire thing. Willing to go the extra mile, however. Dr. Newman, Mr. Jimenez, Mr. Jarrett have all been working so hard to communicate to the campuses, to make sure they have what they need. I mean, Dr. Newman and Mr. Jimenez went out and toured every high school last week in preparation for these graduations to make certain that they had everything. Mr. Clary's group were out scraping gum, y'all, off of sidewalks, making sure that our campuses looked immaculate for those kids to honor those seniors. Dan and his group have been working on all of these budget things and sifting through hundreds of pages of documents, trying to find it. And then Ms. Chancellor and her group have been out there scouring through all of this, those great stories that continue to exist in our community. And so they really have, and I, I can tell you, I've talked with Mr. Jarrett several times. They're just, they're, they're preparing. They are preparing and working so great with technology to, to amp up and to amplify the things that we've done to really do the very best we can for our kids. So kudos to them, they, they really deserve it. So Mr. Clary just texted me, 1.94 million. Meals, folks.
Very close to 2 mil, that's nice.
Yeah, 1.94 million.
Then I had a question. We've talked about how we don't know how many students are returning. What about our teachers? I've, I've had contact with a few, have reached out, friends that, one with a severely compromised immune system. She would be thrilled to be a distance learning teacher full-time. But I've also heard from other teachers that say, you know what? I'm not ready to go back. I am not ready to expose my family to whatever, you know, I might bring home from school. So do we have any idea there of, I mean, because there, there's a juggling act that's just huge. Like Sandy, like you were talking about, teachers coming back and having to combine classrooms. Well, what if the, the rule comes down that, no, you can only have 10 children in a classroom? You know, it's, I mean, the whole dynamics of this thing are so volatile. But what are we, are you hearing from teachers that, are we surveying them to see, are you going to come back?
Yes.
And are you now, too?
That answer is yes. Again, we are looking at this from many angles. You know, we looked, Mr. Jimenez pulled data to, to look at how many people are over 65 within our district. So every employee. So we're looking at that as to, to that piece. The survey that, that we did, so there were three surveys. One to parents, one to teachers, and one to kids. So it was all three that, that we were taking a look at and measuring. And so we are, I've heard Sandy from teachers that say, I had one teacher in particular emailed me and said, if we could please come back one week, I need to say goodbye to my students. And then I had some that have said, you know, I don't, I'm, I'm not coming back. And so again, that's that uncertainty out there that is, you know, is still existence, or still in existence, that we need to wade through. But part of that was, would you be, would, you know, part of that survey is, you know, would you teach distance learning? Is that something that, you know, if we have that? Again, I don't want to say what we're talking about because it could change. But we're looking at all of those avenues and again, really trying to position our teachers in the very best scenario that we can so that they're successful? Because if they're feeling successful, kids will be successful. They will be. Sorry. Mr. Moy, and with that, we turn it back to you.
So we're, you talk, so we're in there, we have these questions. And the one thing I want to point out that's different from this, from the Great Recession, where it was addressed, is stimulus checks can't prevent another wave of the virus. That's the biggest really unknown right now. So let's talk about the current biennium. We're just, you know, wrapping up the first year of the biennium. Before everything shut down, the state was, I mean, just right on track to meet the comptroller's revenue estimates. You know, things have really bottomed out the last couple of months. They announced today 13% lower sales tax collections than May of 2019.
13.5.
13.5, sorry, I'll be specific. And so TEA has assured districts, there are plenty of funds to finish out 1920. And I decided to add this quote from, it's rather lengthy, but from an FAQ TEA had put up on May 21st, talking about leading into, will there be enough funds for 2021? They say cuts are not anticipated, the appropriations have provided sufficient funds, but the decline in state revenues relative to what was estimated is unknown. TEA does not currently project a need for proration, however, the facts could change. And the fact that the, the person, the FAQ specifically used the word proration is because it, there is a history in the state of getting through to the end of a biennium and saying, oops, we don't have enough money. We're simply going to cut back everybody based on the number of students you have. And it was called proration. It was way before I joined school business. But it is a mechanism that the state has at their disposal if they cannot come up with adequate funding to fill the hole. And they, and here, they're saying they will not rule it out 100%. But they do have mechanisms, other mechanisms other than the proration, to help them get through the, the biennium. For us, this year, don't worry, I'm not, I'm not worried. For about this year, we've already received over $70 million of our, what I think is going to be 107 million of state money. And even under a normal schedule, the way that they do, you're going to get this percentage in this month and this percentage in this month. We weren't even going to get 21 million of that until what's called a settle-up next April. So I mean, it's, it is not like being at 70 million now is unusual. And the state, like I said, has some options. When the state adopted this budget, they left $2.9 billion of revenue on the table unappropriated, which means state revenues can drop $2.9 billion and the state would still be at break even. They've already appropriated the 1.3 billion from the ESAR. So now you're up to about 4.2. They could simply move the August 21 state payment to their next fiscal biennium. That would save around $2 billion. And we have a sizable rainy day fund. In the slide packet that you were sent last week, it was based off of an interview Glenn Hager did, where he said there was about eight and a half million. The recent state comptroller newsletter called Fiscal Notes, which I asked Ms. Turner to forward you, brought that estimate down to 7.8. So that's what's in this slide. But even then, so there are pots of money in order to keep this biennium whole. The next biennium is, that, that's, that's different. So yeah, it's impossible to know the, the funding situation. As we said, we don't even know the funding situation for this biennium, much less next biennium. But when we, we do know that there are ways that the state has already done cuts. So if we were to get to a point where there was, there will be a funding cut, we can look to 2011 as a reasonable estimate of how they might do it because they had actually did it this way in 2011. So their first change to the formula was called a regular program adjustment factor. State funding is based on the number of kids you have times the basic allotment, times the weight for that child based on their demographics or instructional setting. So weights apply to special populations, special education, bilingual, comp ed, all those. This regular program adjustment factor, what it does is it takes, shrinks the basic allotment when it's multiplied times the number of students who have none of those extra weights. So you're not bilingual, you're not comp ed, you're not taking career tech courses, you're not special education. That's actually the majority of our F, of our ADA. Some have a little bit of career tech here and a little bit of this there, but they're not, you know, it's not 100%. So I just looked at the entire state formula for all ISDs and just said, what if? Let's just say, what if the state wanted to save around $2 billion? And they use the same mechanism that they used in 2011 to do it? Well, that regular, they would have to bring back the regular program adjustment factor and lower the amount of money that non-weighted kids get by 3.5%. For any ISD, this would result in a revenue reduction of about $12.7 million annually.
And if you'll recall, Governor Abbott, the Speaker and Lieutenant Governor, asked for all agencies to cut 5%. So 3.5 really isn't that far, you know, could be a reality. I also want to remind you of why that 12.7 is so significant. That's pretty much the exact pay raise that you approved last year for our employees.
So I'm not trying to say the sky is falling, the world's coming to an end. But there is factual history of state actions that I need to bring to your attention in case they decide to bring them back again. So let's talk about our biggest pot of money. This one, we actually know something about, is our property taxes. So we got preliminary property values from the appraisal district. Our appraised values are expected to go up about 5.7% in total. Most of that is reappraisal of existing properties. About 2.8, I'm sorry, about 2.2 of the 2.8 billion is reappraisal of existing properties. And about 560 million is brand-new construction. But because of House Bill 3, our tax revenue growth is capped at 2.5%. So no matter what property values grow by, the rate that you multiply times those values in order to get your tax levy will go down in order to get to where that bottom line, that bottom right-hand corner says 2.5%. So even though our values are going up 5.7, the amount of taxes levied for collection will only go up 2.5%. And when I say values are going up 5.7, everyone yell, huh, my house went up 12. Yes, I know. That's the whole $50 billion pot is, went up 5.7. Everybody's property varies in the amount of, how much the value went up. And I apologize, this slide was not in your slide deck that was sent out last week. But I was reminded that if I don't put this slide in here, for no other purpose, if I don't put this slide in here, we will lose 20 points on Schools First this year. This one slide is worth 20 points on Schools First. Okay. So remember that in this case, taxes were going to go up a little over $10 million. Overall funding will not go up $10 million because state funding is tied to property values. The more property value you have, the less state funding you get. So the 10.1 million increase in property tax revenue because of value growth is going to be offset by a 9.7 million reduction in state aid. So really, we netted about 400 million, sorry, 400,000 to the good with all that property tax increase. And prior to HB3, any increase in property value would have resulted in a reduction. any increase in property value would have resulted in a reduction to state aid the following year. Now, they both happened in the same year. Your property values go up this year, your property, your state revenue goes down the exact same amount. Or close to, in the same year. Okay, again, um, everything that we've been showing here is based on very preliminary estimates from the appraisal district. The April, they are required to provide us an estimate by April 25th. As we get closer and closer to budget adoption and especially going up the tax rate, we are going to get closer and closer and closer to, to a more quote-unquote "final" uh, property value. But what I do is I just take, okay, here's the last 10 times, the last 10 April values, compare that to the last 10 certified July values compared to the last 10 values with that they actually ended up by the end of the fiscal year. I can get a pretty good idea of where these are going to track. So I'm, I'm feeling pretty comfortable with, with uh, the estimates that are on these slides. So the question has come up, will the COVID-19 outbreak affect property values? By law, they can't. Your property valuation is based on a January 1, 2020 valuation. There was no uh, Bear County or State of Texas disaster pandemic shutting down everything on January 1, 2020. Even if the appraisal district wanted to say, oh, well, I think this is how much property values are going down, he can't do it for this tax rule because by law, he has to appraise values the value that it was on January 1, 2020. They expect to see an increase in protests filed because of things like different shutdowns, but they're not supposed to approve those protests because again, it's based on January 1. Further, a lot of people have been saying, I want to do a temporary hold on my property taxes because of the disaster provisions in the tax code. The Attorney General has already come across and said, no, that only applies to physical damage caused by a declared disaster. Shutting down your business is sad, but it's not a physical, I mean, it, the hurricane didn't wipe it out, you closed the door. So you're not, there's not going to be any reductions of temp- or temporary exemptions based on uh, a disaster declaration. All right, so that's the value. Again, we multiply the value times the rate to get our revenue. For the longest time, from 0708 through 201819, our MNO tax rate, general fund rate, was a dollar four. This was the maximum amount that the board could levy without calling for a tax ratification election. At that point, the rate was consisted of two items, $1, the mandated state prescribed compressed rate, plus four pennies that the board had the discretion to levy. Those four pennies are called golden pennies because they're much more valuable than the first dollar. Because for every one of those pennies that you levy, the district provides matching funds. They actually incentivize you to go after those four pennies. In 1819, each of the four pennies was worth around 3.9 million locally, but got a $4.7 million match from the state. So they were really worth 8.6 million each. Under HB3 for 1920, that $1 compressed rate was brought down to 93 cents and you still had your four local option pennies, so it was a total of 97 cents. And they also changed the matching calculation slightly, so our total came down a little bit. But even then, for 1920, each of the golden pennies was worth 4.1 million locally and 3.4 million matching, seven and a half million total. And that's about what it's going to be uh, for uh, 2021. The difference is, we don't know what the compressed rate is going to be. I have a, I have a guess of what the compressed rate is going to be because of, based on estimated property values. But like I said at the very beginning, we're not allowed to adopt our tax rate until TEA says, here's the compressed rate that you will then add your local discretion pennies to. Uh, I think we're going to be, I mean, I think I'm going to be right in the ballpark with the numbers that I'm showing you here, but just it, whatever uh, Marath gives me, that's the amount that we're adopting. Unless we think it's totally off and we can appeal. Basically, it's whatever rate caps, you know, caps revenue at two and a half percent growth, which means there are going to be hundreds of different compressed tax rates across the state. Right now, every compressed tax rate across the state is 93 cents. Next year, there could be 500 different compressed tax rates. Also under HB3, the board is given a one-time option in 2020 to add a fifth golden penny. Take the board's uh, discretion pennies from four to five. So for 2021, each of those golden pennies would be worth 4.3 million in tax collections, 3.2 million in match. So we have the option this year potentially increasing overall general fund revenue by seven and a half million dollars. Here is the same uh, exercise that we saw you before, only raising the uh, MNO tax rate by a penny. You see that instead of the total levy going up two and a half percent, it would go up 3.6% up to just under 14.5 million dollars. And again, we have the inverse relationship where property values go up, state revenue goes down. But this doesn't change property values. So when we said state revenue would go down 9.7 when property taxes going up 10.1, here, property taxes will go up 14.5. State revenue would still only go down 9.7. In fact, we would get extra state money on the extra match. So I know it seems strange, we're, you know, in the situation we're in, in these times, talking about adding a penny uh, to the MNO rate. But there are options. You know, for years, we've been talking and actually I, to the point of me almost bragging about our debt management program, about how we've added different debt instruments to uh, diversify, taking advantage of short-term uh, rates, the commercial paper program, the variable rate debt. You guys, when it comes time to tax uh, rate adoption, adopting an INS rate that is slightly higher than what are the minimums required, and we take that extra money and we pay down debt quick, you know, we're making extra principal payments in tens of millions of dollars every year. We have a lot of flexibility uh, on that INS side. And so next week, uh, we're going to bring you more about the Debt Service Fund, but you know, let you in on a little teaser. You know, I think we see a little more flexibility on the debt management and INS rate that could more than offset this penny. So just to wrap up this crazy flood of information from tonight, the general fund's going to end up in good shape to end this fiscal year. Yes, there are several unknowns for next year. Tech, Texas comptroller has already said Texas is in a recession. We won't know even the remainder, the revenue estimate for the remainder of this biennium, much less next biennium, until after we've already adopted the budget. The Commissioner of Education on the calls with the superintendents has warned against adding significant ongoing expenditures.
I'm going to interrupt you, Mr. Moy.
Absolutely.
So again, as I've explained, we've been on calls with the Commissioner several times a week. And then as a TSA member, um, we get a third call with him each week. During one of these, um, because I'm sure you've seen that there are districts out there starting to, um, because they've said, and I, I think this is where they're going, I can't speak on that superintendent's part, but I'm going to guess, is that because um, they've said, hey, we're not going to cut education, even though as you saw, they're still keeping proration in there. So, so, but they've just kind of jumped ahead and they said, well, we think it's going to be fine, so we're going to give a, a 2% pay raise. The Commissioner on one of those calls said, I think they're crazy to do, to make ongoing commitments. That was his words. All right? Then it talks about the general fund should be conservative. So if you'll recall, when House Bill 3 passed, um, Chairman Huberty, right out of Houston area, he's the chairman of the House Public, Pub Ed Committee, really stressed to the districts in his uh, congressional district to go out and give large pay raises, like very large, seven to nine percent because of all this new money that House Bill 3 was going to come. I want to rewind you to 370 days ago, right? When we talked about the 3% raise with you all, we said, we just don't know, we need to be conservative, we need to really think about these things. Well, Chairman Huberty, uh, I was on a call with him and uh, and he also is quoted in an article as saying, I believe school districts should be optimistic in their thinking, but conservative in their approach to budget. That is Chairman Huberty. So um, it is, um, to me, it seems a very um, evident that committing the district to ongoing costs um, may not be the best plan. However, I want you to know that we've talked a lot about it because this is not, this presentation was not the most uplifting, right? Like, let's be honest. It's, it's not like last year where we were saying, hey, we're going to get some money. But, but it's, I know from working with you all now for a little over a year of your commitment to the employees of the school district, right? I know it, um, I know off and on, you all have made comments about how, um, how people, how impressed you are with our, our community, food service, doing the things that they've done, the teachers stepping up in all of these pieces, the principals, all of that. So we've been working very hard, so I, I want you to know that it's all not doom and gloom. All right? It isn't. Dan, uh, Brian, Suzie and those guys really do uh, an amazing job with this. If you'll recall, last year when House Bill 3 was unknown, I took uh, Brian and Dan down to Region 20 because they had figured it out before anybody else could. Uh, I think they figured out some things. Again, we've talked about your commitment to the employees of the school district. So I'm not going to tell you what that looks like yet. But we know that you're committed to our employees to do something. All right? So with that, I'm going to, to end it there. I just want you to know that we really do need to be optimistic in thinking, but we've got to be conservative in our approach. Because remember, pay raises are ongoing costs. And if you, if you notice three and a half percent, well, that was your pay raise last year if they came in and cut us. And so, you know, Dan talked about the district as a whole over time. We've always been very proactive in these and we are going to be very proactive moving forward. Once the COVID-19 hit, we had already done, Mr. Jarrett, Dr. Newman, Mr. Jimenez, we'd all been working on staffing. We went back and revisited staffing and didn't cut any positions, but we downsized a little bit because what we didn't want to do is overdo it and then get caught uh, in a, in a poor place. And so we've already started to take some corrective action to potentially offset any sort of negative consequence that we can kind of project. And so I want you to know that they're working really hard. We're meeting um, several times a week to really go through this because in the end, I know you guys want to do something for our employees and so we're going to figure that out and, and, and present you with some ideas. All right? Compensation is the 15th. That is our discussion night.
So I have, I have a question. This is Terry Williams again. Let me raise my hand. And, and
Say, I'm sure y'all have missed us being live and in person, right? We just can't act like this on Zoom.
That's right. I, I have a new, and it's not David Wants to Know, but it's, this Terry Williams. Now, what was my question? Was there, was there, and you might have mentioned this, but is there extra cost to distance learning that we incur, like, I guess, technology costs?
Oh, there were extra costs in, because again, uh, we put wireless access points in all of our parking lots. We had to purchase some, um, some more Chromebooks. Yeah, we had incurred costs, but again, while those costs were unexpected, we've maintained our budget throughout. Because some of the ways that we saved some money in COVID-19, because utilities, of course, dropped. We weren't running our schools and the air and all of that, right? So we were using some of those offsets to purchase some of these other items. For instance, Mr. Clary, um, before COVID-19 hit, Mr. Clary, how many of those backpack sprayer things did we have? So we had about six, which it, it's a, nah. Electrostatic, it goes in, it sprays, it, it really, it's the deep cleaning kind of part of cleaning a facility, right? Once COVID-19 hit, um, not knowing what would happen, we saw an opportunity to go ahead and purchase a lot more of those because should an outbreak hit, right, we wanted to be prepared to go in there and clean that facility very quickly. So we purchased those. We found out through, um, you know, this COVID-19 relief that we'll get reimbursed for a lot of these costs. But what we were trying to do again is be uh, proactive and trying to foresee a little bit into the future in order to make some purchases to position ourselves to take on some of the challenges that we thought we would encounter. But, Mr. Byer, maintaining our fiscal responsibility within our budget. And that really was, I mean, if you all remember, when you passed that resolution, you granted me a lot of authority, right? But it was very clear in discussions with you all that you wanted to remain fiscally responsible to the taxpayer. And so we have taken that to heart and main, maintained to stay within that. And as you saw with Mr. Moy, kind of see that a 4.5 million, right, at the end of the year. So we're in a good, we're in a good place and we want to make sure that we continue to be in that good place, that we do not put this district in a position that we don't want to be in. You know, other districts in the past dealing with some of the great recessions did RIFs, they did reductions in force. We never did it as a district. We don't ever want to do it because it has so many detrimental impacts uh, throughout. So again, what we're trying to do is, is prepare for some of that, what we think might happen.
So um, kind of going back to the distance learning and the possibility that some teachers could be asked to do, you know, regular classroom and have a distance learning stream going on at the same time, would there be maybe consideration for a stipend for those teachers that have to do that?
So, you know, Ms. Williams, so there, there have been districts out there that have done a variety of things during this, all right? I'm not going to say that we wouldn't, but I took a look at, um, Dan, you're going to probably have to help me with the numbers. There was one district that gave teachers a small stipend. I think it was $50 for internet accessibility, right?
Yes, sir.
We, we took a look at that as a district and it would have cost us millions, 2.5 million dollars just to do that for our teachers.
That's for every teacher, though.
Correct. But that's what that district did is every teacher they gave a $50 stipend to. Moving forward for distance learning, I, I think Terry, what I would say there is, if you're doing nothing but distance learning, that's the sole job, you're not having to do both, then you're doing the job of a classroom teacher, right? There's nothing in there. But again, it's things like, um, while our internet at the schools is very robust and can handle the traffic, what we found during this is teachers, some, some continued to come up. It was amazing how many people continued to, to come up, to access, to continue, which is TEA and the state allowed because we were an essential service to come up to the building, you know, to continue a continuity of education. But some didn't. And so they stayed at home and, um, you know, so we've, we've been looking at ways to try to do that in the future. I just don't have an answer tonight to tell you, this is what we can do. I just know it's very costly.
Just, just a consideration for those that might be in positions where they have to do both. to do both.
Ms. Williams, that's what we don't want to do. We do not want them to do both. All right? There are other districts that are demanding it. We just don't want to. We think it's better for our students and our staff to do one.
Yeah. Mr. Williams, I just would like some, some clarification on that last slide, well, it may not have been the last slide you showed us, but the one about the fifth golden penny. And so, you mentioned that was for 2020 only. Now, is that, so I'm noticing at the bottom here, the percentage growth is 3.6. Is that a one-year reprieve that all districts get?
It is a one-year opportunity to levy the penny. However, if you levy it this year, you can continue to levy that fifth golden penny every year going forward. But all the, what the legislature did was say, August and September of 2020, as school boards who are at four cents or less have an opportu, levy their taxes, you can grab this fifth penny now or never.
I see. So they wouldn't necessarily compress the M&amp;O rate further to hit?
No, no. It's, these, these are the pennies above compressed.
Gotcha. I then actually have one more question, and, you know, echoing Dr. Micah's comment or kudos, and I'll, I'll say that, kudos to you guys for adding roughly $5 million to fund balance. Is there any one function or area that we attribute savings to, or was it just across the board?
You know, we always, you know, again, conservative, but that budget includes every budget manager, assuming they're going to spend, you know, that's every dollar every budget manager could possibly spend. That just doesn't happen.
Sure.
Second, it includes 100% of every single position being filled, 100, you know, 100% of the time.
Yeah.
Traditionally, we go between 97.5%, 98% fill rate. That alone saves, brings the difference between budget to actual of about $10 million. And when, especially during a time of closure, there wasn't a big need in a lot of areas to fill vacancies. So we maybe have gotten a little bit more from not spending that budget in some of these salary accounts. Yeah.
Yeah. Well, take the mileage from it. Congratulations. I think that was great.
Well, and Mr. Hasso, the, the great thing about that, and so you're, you're giving him a kudos, I'm going to give you guys one back, because during this meeting, I got an email that I'm going to share a little bit with you, but we were still able to drop some money to the bottom line, yet you guys took a vote to take care of people. That was super important by continuing to pay them. You went the extra mile by paying substitutes. I want you to know just how important those substitutes are, because if we don't have subs to go into classrooms when teachers are gone, who's going to teach kids, right? So you start, I'm a former elementary and middle school principal, you had to start combining classes. Ms. Estrilane, I'm sure you've had that experience during your career, where you all of a sudden have two classrooms in there because you can't find subs. It was really important to the district and to you all to pay those subs a reduced rate, right? Well, during this meeting, we got an email, or I did, from a substitute that said, I want to take this opportunity to thank NEISD to continue my paycheck. It has been a blessing. I was able to continue payment on my mortgage, and it helped me maintain my entire household expenses. It gives me great honor to be an employee and a substitute for the Northeast Independent School District. These past few months have been a stress in my everyday life, and I miss all of my students at, at a high school. Again, thank you, and God bless, and I will continue to remain loyal to the Northeast ISD. See, those are the things that your votes did, is you took care of people, and you built that loyalty in there, because they're going to take care of us because you took care of them. And we still were fiscally responsible.
That's right. I don't care what Moody's and Fitch says. My love to them, but you're AAA in my book.
I, I think today, with all of us attending graduations and not, not knowing what to expect, I was at Madison.
Obviously.
And to see the staff, and, one thing about masks is they hide their tears. To see their excitement at seeing the families, at seeing the students, to see the students, their excitement at seeing their teachers and counselors and everything, and the number of people that stepped in to help at these graduations, how can we not support these incredible people that have done so much for our children and for our district? It's just, it's a no-brainer. But, yeah, it was really cool at Madison today. And I think everybody else had some, some pretty good experiences too, except for maybe Mr. Leo Skolto the divest today. Sorry about that.
He's coming down.
I thought you were either picking and asking, ask the question, or you were stealing third.
Protecting my, my goatee. Falling on Mr. Hasso's question about the 4.6 million from, that are our projected budget surplus, are there any lessons from any of that? I know that it's not one particular thing, and there's kind of a weird deal, but is there anything out of there we saw that we could carry forward to this budgeting cycle that would, that would maybe help us for the next year?
Yeah. There are always things that we work with, with our budget managers, trying to instill in every single, what I try to, when I talk to principals, be mindful of the budget, but buy what you need. I'm not telling you don't get it. But if it's something that's, you're like, don't spend your money just to spend your money. The old military thing of, I'm going to whitewash rocks to spend the rest of my budget, because if I don't spend on my budget, it gets cut the next year. And that's not our philosophy.
Right. And Mr. Byer, I mean, in the past, I guess, not this year, last year, but previous years, we had cost containment, and there were some years that we had to cut back some percentages to the schools and to all the departments, and then we did that a couple of years in a row. And I think some of the budget managers have, have taken to heart that, you know, they, they try to be as fiscally responsible also. I mean, it's not something that you get to just to try to spend. If you get $100, you don't have to spend $100. And it, I think we've educated our, our principals and our department heads about, if you don't spend it, we're not going to cut you back next year. So if you only spend $80, we're not just going to give you $80 next year. I mean, you know, we, we've been pretty consistent in that message, and I think, I think they've picked up on that, and I think some of the department managers, budget managers have, have done a really good job of, of supporting the district.
And Mr. Byer, we've also taken a look at non-campus personnel and really had some tough conversations, all of us, about, do we really need that position?
Right.
What is it doing? Can it be? And so, over time, we've been, for instance, I'll just give you one, when Otika Gibson, who was our senior director, right, left, Tyler Schusmith took on two roles. Well, it saved us one, one salary. So we've become very creative about some of that, because what you hear out of the state ledge, and again, I hate to pick on Chairman Huberty, but he was the one that said it. He said, you know, quit asking for more money. Take a look at how you're spending it. And so, we've taken that to heart. And, and, you know, the executive staff knows it better than anybody, as I ask 100 questions about, why is that position so important? What does it really do? And is it really necessary? And so, they've been great about it, and, and about reorganizing and shifting and putting the supports that need, because in the end, it's about student outcomes, right? And that's what we have to focus on. And so, that's what we're really trying hard to do. And I can't, well, and I'll just do another shameless plug. I'm really looking forward to, very soon, sharing with you our district support services survey that our principals took. As you recall, we've been working very diligently on customer service, so I'm looking forward to revealing that. I, I think there are principals watching, so I can't share that right now with them. But I'm excited to share it with you, because I think what you will see it will be an answer to some of those questions, Mr. Byer, about some of the other things that have been. It's just a lot of different little pieces, but I think everybody realizes every little piece matters down the line.
Okay. I have a question on your Slide 6, under the CARES Act. Do we know, is my mic, yes, do we know how much we've spent that will be covered under that Emergency Education Relief Fund? And do we know when that check might come in? And could that possibly go toward our budget and make us even look better?
Checks in the mail. That's exactly what I was, hey, it's already here.
Yeah. That's the whole part about rules and application process pending, is the state hasn't even, you know, set up how to log in and say, yes, I want to get some money here, or issued the program guidelines on this yet. What we've heard is, yeah, it'll probably cover da, da, da. But again, at 75 cents on the dollars, I mean, it's better than nothing.
Right, right.
But we will not receive anything from here until, at the earliest, I would expect, August, September.
Okay. And do we know how much we've spent thus far? Do you have that number by chance?
We, the, the, the TEA asked, had us do a survey of things that we put in there, but I'm trying to think, is a lot of it also related to school nutrition, which is going to get their own pot of money? It was somewhere, if I'm not mistaken, it'll be somewhere in the area of $3 to $4 million of cost. The interesting thing will be, is to whether or not they also, they say it's a reimbursement of cost, but they also surveyed us on, how much revenue did you lose? And so, it's going to be interesting to see if they have a provision in there to make us hole in any of that. I mean, that's pie in the sky optimistic. But, you know, we lost, we lost revenue because they're not going to hold us harmless under the Foundation School Program on transportation, because the last 29% of the school year, we did not have bus routes. But we continued to pay the drivers. That's 78% of the cost of our transportation department. Yet they're not going to give us $1.1 million because we did not physically drive those miles through the Foundation Program. Perhaps there will be something within the governor's emergency relief that could help to take off some, a little bit of that burden from us. So, I mean, when the markets crashed, I'm estimating we're going to lose, compared to where we thought we were going to be, a good $1.3 million in investment earnings. There's just no, there are no rates out there for the things that we can invest in.
And Ms. Winkley, so I'm just going to chime in on Brian there, but one, look, TEA, and I, I will tell you, Commissioner Murath has been excellent through all of this. He really has. He has been very responsive. He has tried his very best to support school districts across the state. I mean, I called him one day, he called me back within, you know, probably five hours. And so, they're working, trying to address all these different things, and trying to make rules to release all of this, right? So there's, that's a piece of it. So it's just going to take some time. And then, just remember, the states lost a lot of money. And how much, I think the most startling fact I was given through all of this, is they said, for every time dollar, or gas drops at the pump, a penny, the state of Texas loses $40 million in revenue. Think of how many pennies gas dropped, right? And so, they are trying to do some magic with numbers to try to, to, to pick it up, right? I mean, look, they said across the state, every agency had to cut 5%. Boom! They didn't do it to us, but they're doing it in a little different way, right? They're going to try to recoup some dollars, because they have to, they have to make it up somehow. And so, that's why, you know, Mr. Villery Allen and I have talked, we're just glad we continued some practices over this year. You know, when we talked about being conservative, never did we envision COVID-19, right? But that, that vote of conservatism back in 370 days ago is really paying off for, for the Northeast Independent School District, because we're in a better position now, yet again, to tackle this.
And so, I guess with those extra initial costs that we had when the pandemic started, so we won't have that initial cost should we experience, God forbid, but another break and have to be, you know, where we're all at home and everybody's doing distance learning, but we, we are set in place. So, we are in a better position should this happen again, correct?
Absolutely. I mean, we did purchase more Chromebooks, even though we never ran out of devices. Some districts around the state and around the area ran out, could not get enough devices. We never had that issue. But we went ahead and bought some. See, here's an interesting way that the state handled it, right? So they said, we're going to reimburse you if you bought more technology. But wait, there's more. But if you had already planned to buy more technology, because you were trying to move to a one-to-one, and this just accelerated you getting there, we're not reimbursing you for that. Do you see? So, we're going to get, we anticipate, you know, 75% of that cost back. And so, but that's just a way that they kind of maneuvered themselves around not having to pay all the way across. Brian talked about the survey that he filled out. So there are about 1,100 school districts in the state. There were only 167 that actually took the time to fill that survey out. We were one of them, because it was important to us to make certain that we had a voice at that table, that they saw the costs that we were incurring, so that they understood it. We didn't want to leave it to chance.
A couple of districts also just took our percentages and used those numbers, so-
And that's true.
That is true.
That, that is true. They just-
They did.
Correct.
They said, oh, you have-
They, they asked how Brian did it, so Brian shared, and sure enough, they just used that.
So if it was a district that had 15,000 students, and we have over 60,000, they took our numbers, divided by four, and plugged it into the survey.
You guys, I mean, this cracks me up, but y'all are leading, yeah, I mean, may, oh, gosh. Kudos, kudos. Maybe they should pay you.
Yeah, I know.
Well, I meant, and pay us.
Oh, pay you all, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I was going to say, Dan's, Dan and Brian are already paid.
No, 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 no. I meant, like, pay a fee.
Gotcha.
I think we should lease them out to the state. Maybe they can help them figure out.
Yeah.
Where to get some, to cut some corners and-
Oh, boy.
I really have, yeah. We're going to lease you guys out.
We would love to.
I have complete faith in you. Complete faith in you.
Look at Dan's head getting bigger and bigger.
No, 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 no.
No, I'm just worried about the extra time, what my wife would say.
Yeah. Well, thank you so mu, I mean, I know that this has been very time-consuming and just don't know, but you did a great job. I don't know that you're finished, but-
I am.
Did anybody else have any questions?
Well, I just wanted to clarify, you were giving everyone kudos, not cooties. I probably could have kept that, but-
And we're back.
That is the children's table over there. That is the children's-
But seriously, in all seriousness, before we adjourn, just if everyone could keep our country in your thoughts in light of everything that's going on.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you all for being here. Again, thank you very much, Brian and Dan, and everybody who worked so hard to put this presentation together. And so, we'll have Part Two on next-
Next Monday.
Monday night, along with our regular board meeting.
Correct.
So, the meeting is adjourned, Item 4 at 7:01.